Uh payroll has been handed in and has been so filed and all that good stuff right then. Thank you. Bills to be paid Francis?
Yep, we need to add one. It's uh $135. It's it'll be to uh Rassell Construction. A gutter that we had to replace on Kenny Arms' garage that we hit, so. That'll be the one we had to add, otherwise everything else looked good.
Discussion to Francis please. If there's no discussion, I would uh have a motion to bills to be approved.
What's the total Francis?
Total be 99875.83.
What do you got Albert?
This mic screen went back. Oh, now it come back again.
Francis, you wanna babysit over there please?
Get a hammer.
Okay, I got a motion to approve the bills to be paid. And a second, all in favor say aye. With the with the addition please.
Who seconded that Gary?
Ron made the motion.
I didn't second it.
Yeah.
I just wanna know what this was.
Right.
I'll second it.
Okay, so then I wanna talk a little bit after he seconds it if you're.
Nope, we're open discussion.
Um so you guys can see there about three quarters of the way down. Albert, are you back on?
Yeah, I just gotta get back up there.
About three quarters of the way down, our Second Wind exercise, uh 7999. Uh we did buy three treadmills from Second Wind. They haven't come in yet. And that check won't be written out of our general fund, it'll be written out of our uh fitness center account.
Fitness center.
Right.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
How much were those Chris?
Uh 7999 Ron, and that's uh that's for three treadmills and then we're trading four treadmills in. So we're getting rid of four treadmills that we've had for, I don't know, three or four or five years, something like that. Uh and we're getting three better ones, so they should last us for quite a while.
Two or four years.
There's no warranty. Well, they should last longer than that, I think.
Is it warranty on them or anything?
I think they'll last for 10 years. No, there is no warranty on them, no.
These are used equipment, correct?
Uh yeah, they're called refurbished, they call them?
Yep.
Yeah, a new treadmill costs about $10,000.
Yep.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, I remember it's bendy. That's expensive. Okay, any further discussion?
You must have put the Rassell Construction on here.
Yeah, it was on, I was gonna say that.
I just I just looked it on here. I didn't see it on, it's not on here, but it's on here.
Well, I knew there was one on there.
So it's uh they do an actual sum on the, this here on the page here, it's the same.
So yeah, we don't actually have to add it.
Just not caught it. Sorry about that.
It's starting all over here.
Just one question, I didn't get paid yet. I see it on here though.
Yeah.
We gotta prove it first.
We gotta prove it first.
She just did.
He needs gambling money.
Are we all squared Francis?
I think we're good now.
Now we got the right total.
Yeah, if you go to the original, that's on here.
That's right.
Yeah.
Okay.
It's the exact total I gave you before.
Yeah, that's the number that you said.
I'm gonna rescind the uh motion that's been made and cancel it. And I'm gonna take a new motion please, to approve the bills to be paid as printed.
I'll make that motion.
Now I need a second.
I'll second.
Ron, you got that?
I second.
You got it?
Yep.
All in favor of approving the bills to be paid, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. I will at this time, open the public hearing for the CDVG Housing Assistance Grant. Discussion please.
So do you wanna talk about what we need to talk about on the meeting now, and then just kinda skip over that on the meeting? I mean, we can do that, it's up to you, or we can just close the the public hearing if you want to and.
Totally up to you Chris, you're.
Let's just let's just talk about this right now then. Um so we got uh and I think it's in your packet, my peers. Uh being kinda dumb here, so I don't know what's going on, but um we we did some some looking at maybe narrowing down our focus area. Uh and then we also talked about um should we should we narrow this focus down and try to get some more surveys in? Or should we uh wait till next year? And I just kinda decided that we should wait till next year and uh. I mean, you can apply every year, uh so I think that's best. Uh we can open our survey back up and and see if we can get some more surveys or cer- uh our area and get some more surveys. Um but it looks like we need we need 95% of the surveys back in, so we're gonna have to do some more work. I mean, I'm gonna I'm gonna have to contact everybody individually uh by the phone or or stop at their house and talk to them. Uh cause I mean, we we had people go out and hand surveys out and we actually had people say, yeah, I don't really wanna fill that out. You know, whether we get a grant or not, I really don't want nothing to do with it, so.
What what percentage do we give back on surveys, do you know Chris?
Yeah, we got 50, a little over 50. I mean, you can see there's 55 residential structures, which that's not even true. Um and we got 28 surveys returned, and actually there's 45 residential structures. Uh they went through here. I mean, there's uh the Andy Williams houses on here, the Andy Williams garage is on here as a residential structure. So I went through and I counted them. Uh there is uh there's four four empty houses in this area. Uh there's five places where they have a green dot that's not actually even there anymore. Um the house that's right by the Baptist church isn't uh isn't there anymore. The house that I tore down across the street from me isn't there anymore. So uh there are several places that they thought were residential structures that weren't. Um so uh we sent out 45 surveys and we got 28 of them back, so that's not too bad. I'd say that's pretty close to 70%.
Oh, I thought I thought ours this week, wasn't it Albert?
Better than better than I thought.
I handed out I handed out 20 surveys and you said you only got like five back?
Yeah.
Cause I was in Sioux City or something, I was gone.
Yeah.
And Mary was gone, so I had to handle it.
And I know one of them, I went up to the door and she says, well, I just don't know if I wanna fill that out. And I thought.
You get that? Yeah, you you'll get that sometimes.
I had people tell me, you're not gonna get what I make. I'm not gonna put that on there.
Right.
And I said, well, nobody's gonna know it. Yeah, somebody is. She said, you gotta turn it into somewhere, so.
So so we're gonna struggle with that, but I think I think if you know, if I had a little more time and I can contact these people and and talk to them. Uh that we may be able to get some more of these surveys back, and if we can't, we can't, you know, we can't make them do it.
Nope, nope.
Uh but one thing, one thing that I would point out on there uh of this little um backward seven or whatever you wanna call it shape. Uh there was 28 surveys were returned and 20 of them were interested in taking part in the the grant. So that's a big deal.
Mm-hmm.
Well, yeah, I think like you're talking, maybe we should narrow it down if they're all kind of in a certain area that we can. Now we get that, what 90% we needed, you said?
95.
95s, man. If we get that 95%, then.
Get down to 20 houses, you can only miss one.
You're trouble man.
I mean, that's we're we're gonna play a little game here, cause obviously it's, you know, I can I can about imagine the ones that aren't filling it out are are afraid to fill it out.
Right. And and those are the ones who don't necessarily care if they take part in or.
And they might not even qualify Francis, right?
Well, that's true, but there there's the ones that are filling it out, obviously are.
Interested.
Yeah, interested, and so we should try to.
And we really should help those people out if we can.
That's kinda what I'm, yeah.
Um so yeah, we're gonna we're gonna do our best to to get whatever we need to get. Uh and we like right now, we've got a year now to do this.
Do we need to send out?
Next year.
Do we need to send out a a letter to these people that did want something and say, at this point in time, we cannot pursue because we didn't get enough response and blah 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 and?
No, I don't think we need to do that. I think uh I think what we'll do is um continue on the track and uh you know, once we get to where we wanna be, then Region 12 will send a letter out to the people who are interested and say, now we need to get a little further into the weeds. We need to actually have your tax returns and we need to know that you're gonna be eligible for this.
Okay.
Cause even even if they are um interested in it, doesn't necessarily mean that they can take part in it.
Or they're qualified.
We have to have tax returns or not we, we don't, we won't do any of it.
Right.
Region 12 has to have tax returns and and all that kinda stuff, so um so no, I don't think we need to.
Okay, I'm just asking.
Need to do that, but. Yeah, I think that's a good idea. If so, if somebody asks, then we know. We can all tell them that we're gonna we're gonna continue forward, but we aren't gonna be able to do anything until 2018.
Maybe next year sometime.
January, January 2018 is when we'll be able to apply for the grant.
Okay, motion to close the public hearing please.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
I'll second.
Moved in second to close the public hearing for the CDVG Housing Assistance Grant. All in favor say aye. Do you need, you don't need?
No, that's fine.
Okay. Uh discuss and approve the CDVG Housing Grant update. We've already kinda done that. Do you, is there any more that you'd like to add Chris?
No, I don't think so, other than uh just if you guys have any questions about it, or if you have somebody that comes to you and asks you about it. Come and ask me and uh you know, if I don't, I guess if I don't know the answer, I'll call Region 12 and see what they have to say.
Number one, we didn't get enough response, okay?
Yeah, I mean, that's that's the whole deal.
Right there, that was that was a nice.
Yep, you gotta have.
We need 95% response, huh?
Yeah, that's what they say. The thing, the thing is though, uh you know, they don't know. They have they have some kind of a computer program that tells them what is and isn't a a residential structure or a house. And so they don't know, like, just like the Andy Williams home. That's not gonna, we're not gonna get anything from there, so we gotta take that one out of there.
Yep.
So there will be a few that we have to take out, we have to give them the the addresses of of who that is, uh what that is. There's some empty houses, uh you know, those aren't gonna count. Mary uh Mary Ashinger shop.
That don't count.
That won't count. So they don't know those kinda things, so we have to go through that with them and give them addresses and we'll take those out.
Okay. Any more discussion on that? If not, I'll move forward to discuss and approve the pool liner project, which I thought that looked great, Chris, I really did.
So uh yeah, Gary and I talked a little bit about that today and and uh he thought we should do a little more a little more work on that to see if there is anything uh on the internet. And you know, you can go on the internet and you find all kinds of pool liner companies. Um so I started calling a couple of them. Uh most of them are on the coasts, so either um I'm in the east coast.
New York or LA.
California, right. Um so I did get one of them to uh to say, yeah, we can help you out. A couple of them just said, no, your pool's too big, we can't do anything for you. Um so then I asked the guy, can you give me a quote over the phone? And he said, yeah, if you can give me the dimensions of your pool, I can give you a quote. So we started talking about that and um he said, yeah, uh you know, we've got a we've got a style, uh a color or whatever you wanna call it, that's going out of it's closed out clearance for, we can do it for $10,000.
Oh geez.
I was like, oh shit, that's a good deal. So then I started talking to him a little bit more and he said, yeah, uh we'll come in and we'll put in a a 20 mil uh liner for $10,000. And so I thought, oh, okay. 20 mil is a third of what this is.
Yeah.
This is 60 mil and that's just the top layer. The top layer is 60 mil, the layer underneath that is 150 mil, so we're we're quite a bit thicker than uh than what that guy was talking about. So then I said, okay, do you have anything thicker than that? You know, how did, how expensive does that get? And he said, yeah, we've got a 30 mil layer that's 20,000. So I don't know, and uh you know, those guys were from Buffalo, New York, uh so these guys are out of Illinois.
Somebody around this part of the country would be doing some of that kinda stuff, wouldn't you?
He said Illinois.
Yeah, but the only reason, the only reason I brought that up, I thought, just to keep the guy honest. You know, the one we're gonna just practically hand it to him. I thought maybe we should just, we got a little time to time to look into this just a little bit more. We don't just have to jump, cause we ain't buying it today yet.
Yeah, and we aren't.
So we have time, we got four or five months this winter, to just see whether we're getting a good deal or a bad deal.
No, but I'd be like.
That's my opinion.
I would be like Chris, I'd be very apprehensive. Oh yeah, we can get you one for 10,000. Well, what's he wanna do? He wants to get it off his shelf, he doesn't wanna have to inventory it, he wants to get rid of it.
And it's not as thick and nice.
Deal is, you gotta put out the labels, pretty simple. I mean, does the world wanna buy? What we're getting here is a day gone good deal. We don't have, you know, we always want bids for everything Albert, so we've had a few deals where we really got the shaft. So it don't hurt to maybe just check out a little bit of the. What are you gonna do, get another one from New York? No, there's all kinds of them out there. We were there, we got all all winter to look over.
I I don't. Prices are going up next year.
Yeah. Well, we don't know, we don't know. So it don't take long to look. It's up to you guys, I don't care. If you guys wanna do it, that's fine.
How how do you not know that prices aren't going up?
Well, nobody knows. Hell, nobody knows in here that prices are going up, we don't know that.
They sure as hell will never go down.
Yeah, that's right. That's exactly right.
I'm just saying this, we always always like to see us get a decent bid so we don't get ripped off and that's why I have to, we wanna do it. Bid for our pool. I think this is a decent bid for our pool. It's the only bid we've got. You got more bids you can tell me about? No. Okay. I.
This is 56,000, right, or 57,000 or whatever it was.
I don't know that, I just said it would hurt to check it out. You you just do that favor. That's what we got a man here to, he can do that. Okay. He's capable. Yeah.
10-year limited warranty?
Yep. Because it's supposed to be what, signed by?
Well, so so there's there's a good point, uh Albert. We we've got, we've got a a contract and we've got an agreement.
Yeah.
Uh and I don't know exactly which is first. I think the agreement is first.
Uh December 30th, if I remember reading.
December 30th was something I'd seen.
So that's an agreement and and if we sign this and then we decide in January that we don't wanna do it, we don't have to do it.
Does that cost us any extra back out of the agreement?
No, that doesn't cost us anything to back out of the agreement. What this agreement does is it is it allows us to keep the pricing that we've got right now.
Locked in.
Locked in, and it gives us a little bit of a um.
Cushion period to discuss it and to find out?
It gives us a little bit of um heads up on scheduling. So we wanna have this done first of September, right?
Yes.
If we get the money for it, we wanna have this done the first of September this year.
So if. 17.
17. So if we sign this, we will get a little bit of a little bit of preference on when we.
When we're in line to get it done.
When we wanna do it.
That's my fear, is if we sit back and wait and try to find, check other prices.
We can sign this too.
We got, we got a great price for you, we can take it, but we can't, we can't take care of you like you need to get it done.
If we sign the agreement.
Yeah.
Then we can say, this is when we want it done, and then that's when they'll be here.
And we got another month we can go on that agreement to find out if there's anybody else out there that.
Well, that's on, that's on the uh the agreement. This is the contract. If we sign the contract.
Yeah, but if we just sign the agreement.
Right.
So what's the agreement give us? What what kinda like?
The agreement keep, the agreement keeps the, well, I I'd say, I told her that we would make it, make a decision in January. So whether it's the first or second meeting, I don't think that's a big deal.
We will simplify base any future proposals on our current 217 pricing schedule, it says. By sending can bring you in turn, the proceed with the renovation as outlined to to uh contingent of board's final decision in January of 2017. So that's, it gives you right there, just has you right there.
So whether it's the first or second meeting.
Or January 31st, it doesn't make any difference.
Yeah, so we can, we can sign the agreement and we can still back out of that.
I make a motion, we assign the agreement.
Second?
Second.
Any more discussion on this? Just signing the agreement now.
Yep.
Does everybody understand the agreement? Okay? And then Gary would like Chris.
Well.
To further investigate.
Let's finish this first.
I will, but we're in discussion right now. And then Gary would like to have Chris investigate a further price.
See what you can find. If there's probably nothing better than this, I'm not saying one or the other. But we have made some deals on on our our bid process where I think we probably got taken a little bit, so I thought maybe this was a good idea. Maybe it ain't, I don't know.
Any any further discussion? Motion has been made to approve the agreement with uh Reno- RenoSys?
Yeah.
RenoSys with final decision to be made in January. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Okay. Discuss and approve Chris Robin water, wastewater overtime bonus.
I would like to go into a closed session.
Ooh.
Chris is the only one that can.
I don't think we can do that. Can't go in there.
No.
Chris would be the one I have to go and ask to go in a closed session.
Well, I just don't think Chris ought to be in here and we talk about it.
Oh, we can do that, I don't have a problem with that. Okay, I can leave here.
That that that's my.
That's actually what he's asking.
Yeah.
Okay. Let me know when you're done.
Can I leave?
No, you gotta take notes.
Well, closed session, I'll have to take notes now.
No, we're not in closed session. There is no closed session. This is opening. Uh okay, just uh Albert, uh you get the floor.
Uh my understanding is that Chris still gets his 50 cent raise on the top of this, 1100 and some dollars, is that right?
Le- 11, just a minute, I'll tell you here in a minute Albert.
This is, I think it wasn't just for the past year though.
50 cent raise is 10, is 1,080.
That was a standard raise.
1187, if I remember right. Yeah, it's not in here, I don't have, it's in my other notes. Overtime bonus, I was thinking that we gave Chris and Daryl a raise for extra work that they took on, but nobody said anything about me. I don't feel like this is my place to argue for myself, and while Rob has always promoted giving me more compensation than the guys, I feel like one-time bonus for extra work I did is more than fair. I figured for six months Rick was gone and I worked an average of two and a half hours a week, starting water rounds at 7:00 AM. Take that times 20 weeks and you get 50 hours times my regular pay, which is 2375 per hour, which is 1187.50. If you see fit, this would be a one-time payment. I would rather see this than a bigger raise than everybody else gets. That's, I'm reading that right out the paper guys.
Yeah.
Okay? So there you go.
Well, I don't know, you're, when you're a department manager, you get so much, I don't care if you gotta put 50, 60 hours in, that's what you get.
I agree with that. I think he needs more money, period.
No, I don't.
I do, because you know, uh right now, he's our general contractor in our electric. And I I don't even know what kinda money that's worth, but I know that, you know, when you've got an electric bid like we had, you're talking 450,000 dollars for our uh engineer. And then you're talking X amount of dollars for a general contractor too.
Yeah, we cut that general contract back a long ways.
Well, we don't have a general contractor.
No, that's what I mean, we cut that, I mean, they had the business.
He stayed in communication with the with the uh engineer up there, and he's the one that's buying all of our stuff for us. We don't have a general contractor buying our stuff for us. And he's the one that's coordinating when our digger comes.
Isn't that his job?
I agree, I agree, it's his job, but I I think he's worth more money than what we're giving him, is what I'm saying.
Well, we got.
I mean, you're talking about 50,000 dollar a year. He saved us how much money on this electric thing already?
Less than that.
More than the 50,000 dollars that we're paying him.
Yeah, but it's still his job.
I understand that, but I I still think he should be compensated better for his job.
Rob, we've we've got 75,000 dollars worth of grants this year that somebody gotta put together and that it, that takes that's the best thing that's ever happened. I'm saying it's his job, but it's pretty damn good to get them grants that we've got for a pool, and I don't know if that's extra work or not extra work, I'm not saying that.
No, I don't think it's extra work. I think that is his job, but I think he needs to be compensated for the job he's doing. And I don't think we're compensating it properly, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, like I said, I don't know nothing, so.
No, you can say what you want Albert, you know, just because, just because I disagree with you, doesn't mean you don't know anything.
No, yeah.
And that's that's ridiculous for you to say that every time somebody argues with you a little bit.
Yeah, because I'm always wrong, it seems like. Everybody else is always.
You and I have a different opinion now, and I'm trying to state mine, and you state yours, you just say he's not worth any more money. Why isn't he worth more money?
He's getting enough, as far as I'm concerned.
52,000 dollars a year is enough.
That's right. I think it is.
Okay, that's your opinion.
Yeah, that's my opinion.
What's your opinion Ron? Do you think his job's worth more than 52,000 dollars a year?
I think he does, uh he's pretty, does a pretty good job.
I do too. Do you think it's worth more than 52,000 dollars a year?
Pretty proactive on what he, the jobs he carries through.
I do too.
Yeah, he does, I I agree.
You haven't, you haven't answered the question.
This year we gave him a 2%.
Do I, do I think he needs more money? You're talking about a raise, not talking about this.
No, this would be a bonus.
Thought all along.
Okay, this would be a bonus.
I don't, I don't really call it a bonus, I just call, he put the extra hours in, he got the license for the water. We was in trouble when when Hoppy left. We had to have a licensed man, he went out and got that license, so sure, Hoppy come back. But in the same token, we needed that licensed man, and I don't know how much work he put into getting that, but.
But that was probably company time, so I mean, that's not the issue.
It was all in company time where he had to do extra.
More time once you got it.
Yeah, I I'm not saying that we owe him for his time, I don't think that's necessary. I don't owe him money for the time, for what he's doing.
Francis, you've been pretty quiet, I wanna hear from you.
Well, you know, you look at the whole picture here, you know, we looked at all our other employees, we felt they needed something to some type of compensation for what extra work they had to do.
Oh, and Daryl and Chris you're talking about, okay, okay.
So we compensated them without a a second thought, and now we wanna compensate Chris on some of the extra work he's done. And we we wanna throw a red flag up and don't think it's right. Well, I think it's very fair. I'm with Rob here, I think we don't pay him enough. I mean, he's uh, he's done a lot for this city.
Well, he goes out to, you know, look what he saved us on going out to these mean meetings now.
Yeah, we're gonna get help break in our.
We're getting things coming back from there, and those are things that we sent people out and they never came back with this information because they didn't understand it.
Yep.
When he went out and he, he schooled himself in it, and he understands it now, now we're gonna get money back from him.
And he wants to cut the lec- the town's electricity and I say no.
Well, that's.
Because what in two years, if you cut it down in two years, it jumps way up, well then we gotta go right back up.
True.
Let's use that money for our electric rebuild.
We're so lucky to get 60,000 dollars.
I'd like to give some of it back. I don't think we need to give it all back. I'd like to give him a little, just to say, just for a headline to say, Wall Lake's electric rates are cut by 2%.
Or 1%.
You know? No, we're getting 8% back on that.
Let's let's jump back to, let's jump back to Chris Robin.
But, no, I'm just saying that Eric, every time he turns around, he's making us money and we we don't compensate him for it. We gave him a 1,080 dollar raise this year.
That one was.
Yeah. 50 cents an hour.
50 cents an hour.
50 cents times.
And we gave Lynn the same, and we gave Daryl the same, and we gave Chris.
Your calculator, 50 times 28.
Longer the same.
Everybody got a bid.
50 times 28.
Everybody got a 50 cent raise, so Lynn gets a 4% raise, Chris gets a 2% raise. You know, I'm not saying Lynn's not worth the 4%, I'm just saying, in retrospect, that's what they got. Myron got a 2% raise. I don't suppose Myron's real happy with that either, cause Myron did a lot of work this year.
2080, you said?
2080.
So in other words, you would just double that if you went, you'd almost be.
Are you saying 50? You're not saying 50 cents, are you?
You'd be about a dollar an hour total.
50 cents.
I mean, it's like.
2080, 2080 should be his regular hours, right?
Yeah, when he took his dollars and he actually got about 2,800 dollars.
So we gave him a 20 dollar a week raise for all the stuff he's done for us.
And he wants, he wants only 118750, so.
One-shot deal.
One-shot.
One-shot deal.
Write him a check, you're done.
I mean, that's what he's, he came back with this because he doesn't like to get more than the guys.
It's a lot better putting in the extra hours. It sure looks a lot better on paper. You know, I mean, it ain't, it ain't going, it ain't going in like.
It's his job if he's the manager, yes, I believe that totally. I've been in a management position before too. My argument is he's not getting compensated enough for his manager's position. That's what I think.
Okay, that's fine, that's your opinion.
He gets 52 now, and we're talking about a 5% raise.
We just published 50.
He'd get fifty cents more, basically, so it'd be about another thousand eighty dollars, whereas that eleven hundred would have figured it out, so. So we, so we got the first deal we got.
Francis, twenty-three seventy-five times twenty-eighty.
With the ten forty.
No, just go, no, just go twenty-three seventy-five, twenty-three point seventy-five times twenty-eighty.
Forty-nine, four hundred.
Huh?
Forty-nine, four hundred.
That's gotta be more than that, don't it?
I don't know, I don't know the calculation.
I don't either, right?
Two thousand eighty hours, twenty-three seventy-five, that's, that's what you're looking at, forty hours a week.
He wants, didn't I say twenty-three seventy-five, Francis?
No, what's, what's, a hun, one thousand, what is it?
Eleven eighty-seven fifty.
Eleven?
He wants his, uh, he wants his, uh, just a one-time check, just like us getting written a check for ten and eighty.
Eleven hundred eighty, eleven hundred eighty. Yeah, eleven, eleven hundred eighty-seven dollars, right?
Eleven eighty-seven fifty.
Yeah, I worry about the fifty, but. Well, he said fifty hours is what he roughly put in, right? So.
All right, Francis, what is, uh?
Ninety-eight dollars a month.
What is twenty-three seventy-five times fifty?
So the total package, you're gonna get about two thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars this one-time year.
No, no.
That's what, well, you got the ten, ten eighty for your fifty cent raise, then you get eleven eighty-seven for the bonus. So that comes to twenty, two thousand two hundred sixty-seven dollars and fifty cents.
You can't, you can't count.
Probably always get the ten eighty year after year, though.
Right.
Right, if, if we give him a raise next year, he's got this guy.
He already got, he already got it, that's done.
He got that, right, so we're only, we're only talking.
What do you got, Francis?
We're talking fifty cents an hour, basically.
Uh.
For that, for that.
Eleven eighteen seventy-five.
Yeah, see, that's exactly what he's on, eleven eighty-seven fifty.
Yeah, and that's gonna be a one-shot deal, so.
It's a one-shot deal, he's, Rob is right, he's already got the fifty cents, that's done.
Now, he's gonna get one more fifty cents for this one-time deal, that's what basically brought it down.
That's a one-time deal.
For the fifty.
That's why I call it a, I call it a bonus, but you guys call whatever you want.
Well, yeah, it's kinda like, it's kinda like a.
I, I don't think it sets a good precedent, by giving a bonus like this, I really don't, I think, we wanna compensate somebody, we compensate them with a raise, not a, not a one-time bonus, that's my thought on it.
Hey, especially in a, in a public works.
Right.
It, it looks, it looks better.
I think he's doing it.
The only thing is, of course, the other help, he wanted to stay with the other help, and I understand that, but we also give fifty cents for, for Daryl, we give a dollar.
To Chris.
A dollar and a half, so he actually, he got a two dollar raise this year, with his new. Well, Daryl got a raise too.
Right.
Right, yeah, as I say, he got fifty, he got fifty cents, and he got another.
He got. All right, my, my, my question to you then, from hearing some controversy across the board, do we want to extend his raise higher, or do we wanna give him the one-time bonus of eleven eighty-seven fifty?
If I was gonna do it, I'd do what we got there.
If I was gonna do it, I would do it in raises his salary.
It don't look good to do it that way for public.
I agree. I think it sets a precedent that we don't need to be messing.
So again, just another fifty cents, I'm trying to say, or forty-five, whatever they.
Bonus issue, no, I, I don't like.
I don't like that as a bonus.
Francis, I haven't heard from you yet.
I'm agreeing with there too, I said, it's just gonna look cleaner on paper that way.
Albert?
Just giving him another fifty cent raise. Another fifty cents, and then he'd have a dollar raise this year instead of total.
Albert?
I'd go along with fifty cent raise. Make it a dollar like.
Yeah, I'll make that, I'll put that in the form of a.
I'm gonna go get him, so he can write this all down, okay?
Yeah, because you start doing the bonus, it gets yourself a lot of trouble.
I don't, I don't wanna have to answer to that myself, it is, well, I'll recommend nobody else gets one, well.
Yeah, 'cause you know, if anybody else looks at that or hears.
I mean, you look at Myron, Myron did a hell of a job this year.
Yeah, I know he did.
He should get a five hundred dollar bonus or an eight hundred dollar, if you don't, if you don't.
I mean, if you're looking at it that way.
I think Myron needs more money too, but, I think also he's at the top end of his scale.
Well, you gotta also realize, Rob, that we're gonna talk insurance issue, this insurance was on this today, and that insurance is moving, we got a big insurance problem coming up here, tonight, yeah. Yeah. 'Cause we got the three guys on there, and it's jumping, another two, three thousand dollars, for example, I don't exactly what it's gonna be, but it's gonna be. It's gonna.
Just write a letter to Obama and thank him.
Well, and, and, remember, and Oric is a good man and everything, but his is, be the biggest jump. Well. So he's gonna get the fifty cent dollar raise, even if we don't see it, you know what I mean?
I, I mean, I'm an insurance.
Are you, you can't count age favor. No, no, it's not that, it's just the way it is, it's just the way the system's set up, it ain't his fault, it ain't anybody's fault.
People work there for years, yeah, they age.
You can age, you got a little to do with it, and a lot of others, and Obama, heading bullshit.
I, I know how Wellmark works, their profit is one percent. They, so they make a lot of money, but it's, that is all they can make, that's, that's the law.
That's the law.
That's right, everybody thinks these insurance companies, these healths, bullshit.
But they get a whole bunch of money.
Affordable Care Act is what it's going to.
They get a whole some damn much, Ron, Ron, that, that. Well, I think if they'd let insurance go across state lines would help considerably.
Yes, yes.
That would make a heck of a difference on something.
Well, it's state regulated, don't have, so I mean, do we wanna give the federal government, no.
No, Jesus Christ, no. Up there, checks the water up there, and he digs the test, and he runs over there, and he does the test, and he turned that water on and off about, I mean, it's, it's all part of the deal, but it, that's a little bit extra, he going out of the box just a little bit, really.
I know, but I, I think he likes it too.
Well. I don't know, it's that pump on all the time, Donner, is, you wanna do.
There's nothing wrong with the manager going outside and see what's going on.
Oh, I like that. You, you're supposed to, yeah.
Well, Rick leaving probably was the best thing for Chris.
Well, that, that did save us, that did save us, uh, twenty thousand dollars.
Yeah, but I mean, just leaving for a little period of time, and why we got it back.
How was he apologizing to you?
Thanks, Chris.
You called Lynn, sweetheart. Okay. Discussion has been made upon this, Chris.
Okay.
And, uh, I'm gonna have one spokesman explain this to him, what council has decided, Rob, I think you're probably the best author to explain it to him, unless you'd like me to, it's up to you.
No, we wanna get it done tonight.
Okay. Oh, you're, you're saying, either I'm gonna drag it out, or you're gonna, one of the.
There you go.
Huh?
There you go. Now, Chris, we, you know, we talked about the idea of a bonus versus the idea of a salary raise, we don't wanna get into the area where there's bonuses, because then who else should have a bonus, you know, or somebody else should have a bonus for doing some, uh, people did some extra work this year, we compensate them with a wage increase in the middle of the year, we did not do that with you. Uh, we feel that, I know that you have always argued against getting more wage increase than somebody else, you know, or whatever, but if you look at it from a purely, uh, percentage standpoint, you'll see that your percent, that what we are going to offer you is, is, is just what Lynn got. And what that is, is another fifty cents an hour on top of the fifty cents an hour that we did at the last meeting, so we would bump it up by that much incrementally again as a raise.
So it's not classified as a bonus.
We think that what you've done is a, we think what you've done is, is a great job, you know, we talked about the things that you've done, you've, you've gone out to Mean, you've, you've scored some things with Mean for us, uh, you've done the water stuff like you're supposed to, uh, we think that you've done a great job doing that, it's also within your realm of, uh, you know, you're the manager, and it's still within your, in your occupation to do so, the fact that you did it well, means that you need to be compensated more, that's where, that's what the difference in the bonus versus the compensation is. Also, you know, we talked about grants and those kind of things, and the number of grants that you've scored this year, you and Lynn both, I, you know, I can't leave Lynn out of this, because Lynn has scored some good grants too. But this office has generated a lot of grants, uh, we've generated some good savings in our, in our electric department too, by the rebuild that we're doing, and the money that we're saving by not having a general contractor, by not having a, a totally inclusive engineer in it. So those kind of things, we feel that your raise is warranted, so.
Uh, yeah, I mean, uh, and, I'm not gonna argue with you, I guess, um, yes.
Then I would put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that motion.
Been made and, it's been moved and seconded to increase Chris Rodman's wage by another fifty cents an hour to his wage, although he's salaried, he can figure that out. Roll call vote, Rob?
Yes.
Gary?
Yes.
Francis?
Yes.
Albert?
Yes.
Ron?
Yes.
Motion carried. All right.
Thank you, guys. I appreciate that. And I, and I would like to note, uh, too, just so it's in the public, that, uh, that Lynn and I have written grants, uh, and, and gotten the money in for, uh, just about seventy-nine thousand dollars this year, so.
If I remember correctly, uh, Albert and Gary and I brought back three of them, or two of them.
Two of them.
That you about fell over and fingered.
I did. I'd never guessed we would get that much, I was thinking half of that, so, yeah, I was pretty pleased with that.
Okay, let's move on to the next session, otherwise, like Rob said, we'll be here all night. Uh, health insurance options. Chris, do you wanna discuss this a little bit?
Yeah, uh, so our health insurance is gonna go up.
Imagine that.
Yeah, right now, we pay, and you guys just saw it, seventeen hundred and seventy-seven dollars and some odd cents per month. If we don't do anything, it's gonna go to two thousand and fifty-three dollars and some odd cents, so it's gonna go up by fifteen percent roughly. Uh, so I've been talking to our current, um, agent, whatever they're called, I don't know exactly what it is, but I also, I also was in contact with, with another agent on Fort Dodge, and, uh, we haven't quite gotten everything there yet, and, and kinda the sticker there.
This starts when, again, Chris?
Uh, February first is when the new goes into effect, so we've got a little bit of time.
They may have it this week or first part of next weekend.
Well, I wanna talk to you guys about what's going on there, they, uh, we con, we contacted a group out of Fort Dodge, and they wanna be our agent, and I was a little bit hesitant of that, because we've always gone through Travis with everything, and so I wanted to talk to you guys to see what your thoughts are there. Um, now, they may be able to get me a, a quote, and, you know, I might be able to say, uh, yes or no, um, but if we do go with them, they're gonna wanna be our agent, and I think then that'll, Travis will lose some business, and, and I don't know what that is, I don't, Travis really doesn't have a lot to do with our health insurance, other than I do talk to him before I talk to the people in Des Moines, whoever that is, and I guess I don't quite understand the, well, it's the group. Administrator, I guess, is probably what we'd call them.
Yep.
Uh, so I wanna get your guys' input on that, do, do we wanna, do we wanna talk to Fort Dodge enough to where they may be our agent, or do we wanna?
Do you think there could be a savings there, Chris, at all, or if anything?
I think they can offer us almost the same thing as, as who we're with, it may be a little bit different, but I don't think it'll be a huge difference. What are your thoughts on that, Ron, you're a little bit closer to that.
I mean, there's a lot, a lot of things out there that you can purchase, I mean, Wellmark, uh, on their group, they've, they've got a large assortment of groups, and, if, you know, they can pick and choose, and see where you're at, and then see what they can do. But, uh, Well, Wellmark, just personally, I mean, you know, for personal, they've only got four options now.
Right.
For two thousand seventeen, so.
So it may be a different company that we go with through these guys, so.
But a lot of them, I mean, there's, there's a lot of difference between a PPO and an HMO.
Right.
And a PPO, PPO is much better.
What I was told is we don't really wanna go with an HMO.
No.
'Cause they're kind of a pain in the butt, and.
Well, you gotta have a specified doctor.
PPO, yeah. Right, and, uh, so, without really putting Ron on the spot, let's, let's talk just a little bit about our options that we have right now, not including Fort Dodge. One option is to do nothing, and, and our insurance goes from seventeen seventy-seven or seventeen seventy-eight up to twenty fifty-three, which is a two, that's two hundred and seventy or eighty bucks.
Yeah, I was gonna say, two seventy.
It's fifteen percent, let's just say.
There's, how many's under that, Chris?
Three.
That's three?
Right, our deductible is seventeen hundred and fifty dollars, Albert, and what's gonna happen is the deductible's gonna go from seventeen fifty to twenty-two fifty.
That's what I thought.
And we don't have any, we don't have any choice in that.
Yeah.
No, under, under that plan.
Under that plan, right, but we do have a choice of, of another plan, it's very similar to the one that we have, uh, the deductible would be fifty-five hundred dollars. And if we, if we do that one, uh, then our premium would go from two thousand fifty down to fifteen sixteen. So there's a pretty significant savings there, about, about five hundred bucks a month.
So that's six thousand dollars.
Six thousand dollars.
Yeah, but that's more like your pocket, or the employee's pocket.
So what happens there is, the employee, if they go to see their doctor, you get sick, you go see your doctor, you have a, you have a forty dollar copay right now, that would change from a forty dollar copay to a fifty dollar copay, not really that big of a deal. But if you go to a specialist, then that all comes out of your pocket, up to your deductible. So that, in the new plan, the only thing that the plan pays for is to go see your doctor. So my thought is, can we do that plan, the fifty-five hundred dollars, and then, and then with the savings that we have, the five hundred dollars a month, we form a slush fund.
Back into the employees.
We form a slush fund, and then if they have to go see a special doctor, and they have to pay three hundred dollars out of their pocket, we would actually pay for that, up to a certain amount. And my thought is maybe two thousand dollars, is that certain amount.
Two, Chris, you could, there's health savings accounts out there too, that you could look at, that, uh, with, with the, the group, uh, not administrator, but the group itself can do an HSA, in other words, it's kind of the same thing, it's what you're talking about, there's a slush fund, there's a fund here, and that pays, I mean, if only two of them get sick or something, that can all go into that. You know, it, it's not just per individual, it's, it's an amount of that group.
Right.
So it's kind of a share thing.
And that's kind of my thought is, is, 'cause we're, we're gonna have one, one guy that uses, uh, his deductible, let's just say.
Yeah.
Which, which three people are involved? Um, I'm not sure that we can really make that public, honestly. We, I mean, we can come in, you guys can come in and talk in my, in my office, but I don't.
I know, two of them.
Yeah, um, but, uh, so, so, two of them won't even, won't even care that their deductible went from seventeen fifty to fifty-five hundred, 'cause it won't cost them anything. So that's where we're gonna get our savings. The other one we're gonna have to pay a little bit for, but I don't think that'll be terrible.
And as long as they do the preventive stuff, you know, that's, that's no, they're not paying a deductible, and they're not paying any cost on that. They go, you know, uh, uh, physical, that's preventive, things like that, I mean, there's some options in there they can look at.
Yeah.
Cut the corners.
So that's one option that we would have, another option.
Would that be an option that we can do through, uh, Travis?
Yes.
Okay.
Well.
That would be, and all of these are through Travis, um, the second option that we would have is, we would pay the premium of the fifty-five hundred dollars, okay? And then, if an employee wanted to get a better deductible, he could pay himself, could pay the difference between that deductible and this deductible, which is gonna be an average of two hundred and twenty dollars a month, roughly, per individual.
So if you want a better deal, then they gotta actually pay for some of it, that would be one of them, their clause.
We could, we could do that, um, that one I don't care for as much as the slush fund one, myself.
Do we have a third option or not, just two options?
No, just those, well, three options, do nothing.
Do nothing, okay.
Keep what we've got, um, second option is, is for us to buy the higher premium plan and make our slush fund, and, and then we pay a certain amount towards anything that would have been a deductible, that isn't a deductible now, or we pay for the higher premium, the higher, uh, deductible premium, and let them buy, they call it buying down.
Okay, I'm gonna throw this out to council, just to see what, uh, discussion's gonna be on this. Me personally, I got Rob's kinda train of thought, I wanna keep my money in town, I know it sounds like Westside, but Westside still works up here, they're still here. That's still a business in Wall Lake, so I would just soon keep my money in town, I'm gonna go from there, go ahead, discussion.
And I don't think, we don't have to make a decision on this tonight, I know it's, I mean, there's a lot of things thrown out here, so, uh, we've got a little bit of time to think about this, I think at our next meeting, we'd easily be able to make a decision.
I think too, Chris, if, uh, if you get some bids, just, just calls in, and we'll take a look at it, won't you?
And I, and I think, what, what the deal is, uh, the, the person in Fort Dodge has asked me to assure them that if we went with them, that they would be our agent. So we could probably get a bid, and.
They, they don't have a choice, that's the state.
Yeah, okay, so we can get a bid from them, we just.
You can get a bid from them and decline, they're just doing.
Then that's what, that's what we'll do.
Then you know where you're at.
They, they will feel bad. Nah, that's what they do.
That's what they do.
Francis?
Well, I'm strongly in favor of definitely keeping it, uh, local here, you know, we preach that to our people in town, we need to do it ourselves, which we're all, I think all in favor of too, again, but you know, if we can get, you know, some type of a bid out of them.
Look, look at, look at something different, yeah. I, I'm fine with that, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Ron, let me ask you, is it possible, let's just say, what should come back with a little cheaper price or something? Is it possible for Chris to barter with, with Travis?
Uh, not.
Uh. I don't know, I don't have no idea.
I just, explain, and I do groups, and I get a whole booklet of different plans, I mean, a whole bunch of sheets of different plans, it tells you what your deductible, it tells you out-of-pocket, you tell. It, it, I mean, it goes on and on and on.
Tells you all kinds of stuff.
So, I mean, there's a lot of things out there that's, you can do.
But there's no bartering. It's, it's whatever the plan is.
Yeah, whatever, whatever that plan is, that plan is, yeah, you're not gonna, you can't cut and.
Now, if we go with the best plan we can get, we gotta do the slush fund, cause maybe that probably could be, uh, of the best plan. I kinda like the slush fund.
I personally think it'll save us money.
I think, you know, it's kinda like, uh.
Look more.
It's kinda like, uh, our wind turbine, you know? We chose to not pay the full amount, uh, to them, but save it back ourselves and we ended up with a hundred fifty thousand dollars in the bank. Because we didn't have to use it, which, you know, most of the time, I guess you really don't have to, but there are times when you do have to and that's where you're gonna cover it.
And we could, and, and with that slush fund idea, we could kinda cap our expenses, you know? We could say, we're gonna pay, uh, your deductibles up to a thousand dollars or two thousand dollars, or whatever that may be.
When we start that kinda fund, what do we have to do? Is do it, once we start, we gotta continue to do it all forever? Or how would that be?
No.
Say we don't like it.
One year is all.
Say down the line, yeah, but they've got the money sitting there, so.
It's only like ten for a long time.
So I think what Gary's saying is if we, if we save that money and we've got six thousand dollars in there at the end of the year and we change what we're doing, can we take that money out and use it for whatever we want? Sure we can. It's still our money.
It's still.
It's, it's.
Yeah, I think we, I strongly recommend, I think we leave it there.
And if they don't use it, that year, you suck it away.
Move along, they're only gonna make us be more demanding and make us go more that direction. It's either that or we start making, the employee pays so much of their insurance, you know, that's two big companies do that all the time.
Go to Trump Care? And what?
Uh, no, they're gonna have to have some sort of.
I know they are.
Tree mower stuff, but, and, and that's what's causing this.
What Francis said, I think, is a very good point. If we do the slush fund and we save money into the slush fund, I think we continue to do that. Or we get it to a certain point and we leave it there, because one of two things is gonna have to happen. Either, either we're gonna have to have a much higher deductible, so we can keep our premiums down, or we're gonna have to ask the employee to start paying for a portion of their, uh, health.
Which most companies do.
And I don't wanna do that right now.
No, I don't either, but I mean, that's what we're running into. I think CPS, I see you even gotta do that down there.
We do, we don't, we do, don't we, Francis?
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
I mean, you can't, you gotta pay something out of your pocket.
Oh, yeah. I got, uh, I think mine's thirty-five hundred or four thousand.
That's quite a bit.
It's gotta come out of my pocket. Yeah, ours, our insurance ain't the sweetest, is it, Francis?
Oh, it's one of the better ones out there.
It is, it is, but it's definitely good. But, so, so then what I think we should do, unless you guys wanna talk about something else, I'll go back and I'll, I'll get at least one more bid and maybe try to find another one, uh, from somebody else and have that on our next meeting, so we can make a decision.
I think you should do that.
Move this forward.
I think you should do that. One, at least one more. I would like two more.
There's nothing wrong with having a couple bids.
I would like, I would like two more if you can get them, Chris.
Yeah.
If you can't, you know, so be it, so.
There's a wide range of costs in there, believe me.
Any more discussion on this? This has been tabled till next meeting. Skate park.
You're up.
I don't know what to say about this, other than we, uh, you guys were at the last meeting, we had a kid ask us about skate, skate park. I personally don't know where we put it, uh, I mean, unless we did something up at the complex.
Yeah, we talked about several locations, but.
We did at the last meeting? I, I guess I don't.
Yeah.
Or did you?
We talked about ice skating, yes.
Yeah.
I meant to add.
There, that was the other place, yes.
Now, wait a minute. No, 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 no.
We're, we're not sure what skate parks, this is a.
Completely different skate park.
Oh, oh, oh.
At the last meeting.
Are you talking about Evan's skate park? Oh, I'm sorry.
At the last meeting, we had Evan Boger in here.
Evan Boger's skate, skate park, skateboarding park, I'm sorry. I, I was like you, I was.
I don't know where we put it.
Yeah, I.
Maybe we gotta talk to Marty Ford.
I mean.
I think there's, we can probably get grants for it, it's just I don't have a location.
Grants.
I think we could get grants for it too. Uh, you know, one of the things that we've always talked about, uh, when people have an idea.
See where the costs are before we do that.
Well, that first, obviously, but then, uh, you know, one of the things that we've always talked about with people who have an idea of something that they wanna do is, you know, bring us something. Cause I, I, you don't want me putting together your skate park. I have no clue how to skate. I don't wanna do it. So I don't know the first thing about it, so bring us what it looks like and then we can figure out what the costs are. Biggest thing I, I would assume here would be insurance. What are the, what are the liabilities that would come with this?
Concrete would be the number.
Now, Carol, they got, is that a skate park or is that where they use these, these, uh, blanket?
That's a one-time deal.
Roll, you know what I'm saying? Skateboard, that's a skateboard deal.
Skateboards, that's.
Yeah, but you could use roller skates too, no?
Yes.
Well, you, I don't know if you could or not, I just, but I think the skate, it's skateboards.
Yeah, skateboards.
That's what I thought too.
Yeah, skateboards, yeah. I think if you put this in, and I don't know about what you think, Rob or Frank, but I think the best bet would be up here to the, uh, complex.
Yeah, it would be, but where do you put it?
Right north of, right north of the, the new tennis court we're putting in.
Yeah.
Oh.
And the first lot out there.
Drugs you smoking.
Well, we got the grant, we're gonna be fixing the babies up, we're gonna be paying pickup boy before you know it.
I can.
You probably will be.
It wouldn't be in good town by the barn, I do it.
Well, if you'd go north of where the tennis court is. Yeah, right north of there, there's a big empty lot there.
You know, I think, I think, I think the whole issue is though, I, I don't think any of us have any clue how big something like this is. Is it the size of this room? Is it the size of this building?
No, it'd be, it'd take up all that, that area where the trees are at, north of the tennis court, it'd take probably all of that, the ones I've seen anyway.
Really?
Yeah.
Yeah. You got a blacktopper, you gotta do something, it's got me all eight dollars.
But Chris said that that's a one-time charge. The concrete would be a one-time.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And then I don't know, can you get grants for concrete? Cause remember how?
Well, you wouldn't get grants for concrete, but you can get grants for building, something like that. Sure we could.
I think they put down a carol.
Maybe you would wanna talk to, and I don't know, maybe, I don't know if Evan knows where to go, but talk to somebody that's got one and see what one looks like.
Carol has one?
Carol got one, right on Grant Road. I don't know if it ever gets used, but they got one.
Tucker's home here.
Has it?
How many kids in town skateboarding?
Well, according to Evan, according to Evan, he said he can get ten to twelve buddies of his that would love.
Uh, there's three girls across the street that do it, right out on the street.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I'm gonna table this one until we get more information on this one also, Chris.
From me.
Yes.
You don't want Evan to bring anything in.
Not yet, not yet. Just tell him to sit tight yet.
I would call Evan though and just sit down with him and.
Tell him.
Get his input. I mean, that would, I think that'd really be cool on his, something to handle.
And give him an idea, you could ask him.
And maybe his buddies would come in with something too.
You know, or give you an idea.
Think of bringing your skateboard and show you how to use it.
But see, they don't realize, I mean, how many dollars we're talking about this. You, you think fixing the tennis court, tennis court. This would be way beyond that.
I don't know, you could find out how much carols actually cost, you know?
Yeah.
So is that what you want me to find out, is how big it is and how much it costs?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Well, and maybe you can get a, maybe you can get a layout and show, show Evan.
I mean, I don't think we need to get as many as Carol or I think we just, you know, we downsize ourselves.
You never know, like, know what you got and then cut it out.
Best place would be right by the swimming pool.
That's what I'm thinking too, like north of, that, where that pads out to the south, the pool there.
That's a good idea.
So they could just, you could just connect it right to the pool.
Well, then they could just jump right out of that into the pool. Yeah, that's a thought.
And there's why I'm building it.
That's a thought.
Yeah.
Insurance just.
But I, I would definitely check that insurance on skateboards.
Okay, let's keep moving on, otherwise we will be here all night, guys.
Any more, any more discussion? Discussing approved fitness center treadmill purchase. I think we've already kinda went through that, didn't we?
Yeah, I, unless you guys have some questions about it, we, we're. Discussing, uh, employee evaluations. Yeah, did we get those done? If you guys did.
I, no. I didn't.
I didn't receive.
Give those to the honorable mayor. I emailed it.
Boy, I look back at my emails. I can't find them.
It was last week.
Did I leave you off that list?
Nope, we didn't get it. Linda didn't, she didn't say anything in there about it. I think I, I got it, but we didn't get the whole sheet. I don't know, there was some reason it didn't get it on the computer. She says, I got something on this here, but it wasn't right. I was supposed to come down here and pick one up, that's why.
Sounds like a resend, Chris.
I went back and I looked under, and I didn't look under city one, I looked under city WL and there was nothing there from you. As far as that goes.
Only thing I got was, or she said was in there was the package, that was all.
I'll just resend it.
Okay. Uh, scale outs. We've been talking about this ever since I've been mayor.
Well, I just had somebody come to me and, uh, they said, what do you think about removing the scale house? And I said, we don't use it? I think it's a great idea. I think it'll piss some people off, so let's ask you guys what you think.
I don't.
I thought we was gonna knock it down a long time ago.
They won't, uh, they won't certify it.
No.
And they keep telling us it, it won't be much longer down with that scale, just gonna go.
Yep, alright, yep.
I think we should knock it down and fill her in and.
Who, who would be upset?
Historical people?
Yeah. Huh? Yeah, in favor, that's in this, that's, that's been in this town for how long? Who cares?
Not you.
No.
Well, I tell you what, we'll, we'll table till next week, cause it's in the minutes right now and we'll get it discussed over coffee, you know?
If we, if we don't do anything, I think what we should do is take the scale itself out.
At least take the scale out.
Yeah, yeah, fill that in.
I mean, I strongly suggest we do that, because when we were still using it, the last time they certified this, they said, they, they said this will be the last time we will, because one of these days you're gonna find yourself.
Right, let me ask you this, and, Frank, if we, if, if they take that out though, isn't there the bars and stuff down there?
Cut them out.
Cut them.
Just take them out?
How about if you just, can you just pull the slab off and fill it with sand, put the slab bag on it?
Yeah, you can do that too.
Yeah.
Then it would just look like a scale still, but it'd be.
Yeah.
Fill it up with sand.
Well, I didn't know if they wanted to move that. If they wanted to move that, his scale to be historical, saving it.
I don't think it's a scale, so I don't really care about the scale.
No, they just like the, the building and the look of it, you know?
That's a clay tile. You, you try to take that apart, you'd have one, have them clay tile, don't move.
I still see man in the forest walking on there with his crutches. Can't we steal them from him?
Yeah.
You think Bertie would've put that in the will that he had took care of that the rest of, rest for the rest of?
He gave it back to us for a dollar, didn't he?
Okay, let's, I don't know, let's move on. We'll just put it in the minutes and see what kinda discussion we get. Sack County and Diamond Foundation Grants, Chris has got the, uh, stuff what Albert and Gary and I brought back. Uh, in the back of your packet there, you can just see, I just wanted to put these in here and just, uh, I don't know, I guess show off a little bit maybe.
Kudos.
We got twenty-eight thousand. Twenty-eight thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for our pool. Uh, and so, uh, just a little bit more about that, uh, the, uh, I call it a gazebo, I don't know what the hell to call it, the shade, uh, we got the, that stuff ordered and, uh, Rick, Rick wants to get to work on it right away, so, um, that'll be, that'll be built in no time, as long as we've got some decent weather. Like days like today, if we had the material, Rick would've been down there building.
Could've been doing that stuff, yeah.
Yeah, so. As soon as the, uh, lumberyard gets that stuff, we'll get to work on it. Pretty good deal for our city.
Yeah, well, and that shade will make a lot of people happy.
Alright.
Cause I got a lot of grumblings about no shade.
They hate to sit in a shop when they, we are one of them.
Well, they, young women, it was the older ladies that. And I caught some of the black.
Didn't you got something down there that we could get in an empty shade?
Yeah, come bring your umbrella.
Okay.
Are we on that?
No. Pop-up forum.
Yeah, okay.
Uh, Chris, are we on Twitter here at Wall Lake?
No.
No? Okay. I'm not on Twitter either, but I know somebody that is. And the city of Wall Lake was trashed on Twitter.
Cool.
Really?
Cool. There was a lady that complained that the city did not clean the cemetery roads. And I said, the cemetery roads will not be cleaned unless there's a funeral out there. And this lady was a little upset. And she wanted to go out and visit her father's grave during, true home. Yep. And I said, if you wanna go see your father, the road that you would've took had about two inches of snow and if you couldn't have made it, it's your own damn fault. Well, she thought the city should've been able to clean that, so I'm just passing the information along and. And, you know, uh, I think that's a valid point. If, if the snow hadn't fell when it did, I think we would've done that.
Well, I'm gonna still put in the paper that I think the city guys did it, cause they did an excellent job, cause they did that on Friday afternoon. And they didn't have to, because I give them, I give them the day off, the afternoon off, and they didn't have to do that.
And, yeah.
I'm glad they did, they did, the streets looked a hell of a lot better.
They did a damn good job and, uh, you know, the, the rain actually, uh, cleaned some of the sand off too, so.
Yeah.
I thought, I thought our guys did a hell of a good job and.
Chris, you wanna tell them what that I forwarded to be put in the paper? Did you need my thank you?
Yeah, um, Steve, I'm gonna put a thank you in the paper for Teresa and, uh, and, uh, Prue. Uh, she's sixty-plus, really good meal and, uh, a lot of people showed up, so, uh, she was pretty appreciative of that. And, uh, we actually got a card to give to them too, so.
I just thought we should put something in the papers.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea, Steve, and I think it'll make.
That's why I copied you.
Yeah, I, they did a good job.
She did a good job.
It was tasting and everything.
Really good meal, so.
That's why I copied you and see, see what I was doing, so.
Yeah.
In fact, if them, all the meals are good, I had to start coming here eating.
Oh, she's just putting on the dog.
Yeah, she's putting the dog on.
No, they really do, good job.
Now, now she thinks she's got you.
Yeah, are you even sixty yet, Ron?
Not quite.
So I've got one thing to talk about in the, in the forum, uh.
Probably the oldest one here, yeah.
We're probably gonna need to, probably gonna need to talk about in, in a meeting pretty shortly.
Are you sending that?
Todd Stankant would like to build a, a building on the south end of our airport.
July.
Yeah.
And, uh, he'd like to get started pretty soon.
Six months ago.
Yeah, buy the land, is he gonna sell it and give it to them?
Well, we would have, we would have to sell the land. What we're working on right now is trying to figure out how to fill in the ditches. You guys know where the hump is and where the dirt's at. We gotta fill those ditches in. Not know how much that's gonna cost, uh, so we've got a couple of guys working on that right now.
That is, uh, uh, what do you call that, Franny? Uh, floodplain, floodplain, so he's gotta build that up.
Build up to height of the highway.
I asked him if he wanted to get it up to the height of the highway or if he could leave it right where it's at. Right now, right now, it's about two feet lower than the highway, so he said, hell, I don't care about that.
Yeah, if you don't care, that's his deal.
Yeah, but it's in there.
To me.
I don't know if we can legally do that.
Yeah, I was gonna say, isn't there a legality there that he has?
You sell it to him, he got his own deal.
I think we can sell the ground and they can do whatever they want with it. I think we can sell the ground and they can do whatever they want with it.
I think you can do it.
But we didn't have any trouble with selling the ground to, uh, Raccoon Valley.
Yeah, and that ain't no floodplain.
Well, it is a floodplain, actually, it's a lot cheaper than.
The, the whole, that whole strip's a floodplain.
Yeah, well, everything down there, everything on the south end of Wall Lake is a floodplain.
Yes, yes, yes.
But, he's pretty interested in it.
It's usually underwater.
Yep, he's pretty interested in it, and so I think we need to, either say yea or nay.
I think, I think it's a yea deal.
Yeah, I mean, he wants to buy an acre, uh, he wants, what he wants to put in is a, a, uh. A truck washout, uh, sixty by a hundred building, um, with a truck or a washout on one side, and in the front, on the other side, you'd have a shop where they could work on trucks and. Uh, and they're gonna have a little bit of storage in there too, so.
Tell him to expand it and make it a damn car wash also.
Yeah.
Serious, I'm sure, I think.
We don't care if he wants to do that.
I think it'd go over, because this one ain't running up here. Nobody uses it.
They don't run it.
And I'll tell you what, you go to Lakeview.
I know.
That's plugged.
I run into somebody from a lake there, kinda, oh, yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah.
I've had to sit an hour before I can get into that car wash in Lakeview.
Greg Brother could end up, end up put one in, but I haven't, then I.
I don't, I just go on by and come back later.
So, so the way it sounds, we're good with him building something there, as long as we can get worked out, deal over.
How many acres does he want?